I'd like to call to order the Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, October 4th at 7:00 PM. The first agenda item is a continued public hearing for Beth Longer-Gren, case number 2023-14, 278 Northwest Main Street. The applicant or representative here?
Good evening. For the record, Margaret Bacon, Civil Site Engineering. And I was at the meeting a month ago regarding a pre-existing non-conforming lot. And some concerns got brought up regarding the storm water on the site, and we do have a letter from the Highway Superintendent. So, and there was a few others here too also talking about the issues with the drainage on Southwest, Northwest Main Street. So I did go out there when there was a good rain event, and I met Mr. Bombara out there. And I could see where the issues were, but they weren't coming from this site, nor will they come from this site. But it's kind of like, this is almost like the crest of the hill, you know? And there is a lot of issues coming down off of that development there that's creating a situation further from our site. So our site is not going to contribute to that problem. But I do know that what was brought up at the last meeting was regarding the storm water. So the only storm water that's going to be affected is from this site heading towards the lake. So it's my understanding that I was going to file with the Conservation Commission and address that storm water before the zoning board was comfortable signing off on this. That's the way I thought we kind of left.
Did you have any conversation with Highway Superintendent?
No, but I will. Once I get more into the storm water controls on this site, then I have something that I can really talk to him about. So what I have to demonstrate that what we're going to do is not going to affect these houses on the lower end, so all the grade goes this way, or we're not going to create a problem with whitens reservoir. So I gotta come up with some storm water controls for this site. And so what my client's doing right now, we're gonna make that house a little smaller, you know? So that, less disturbance, less runoff, and that gives me some room to do some type of storm water control, so. So that's why we kind of, where we're at right now, so I thought we would just ask for a continuance, and I thought Jen was gonna have a letter or something.
Yeah, we have one here.
So let me just ask, so I'm doing a lot of these lately, these pre-existing non-conforming lots. So, actually, I have 58 Cottage Colony right in behind me. So is it the practice now that we want to do Board of Health and Conservation Commission before we come before the ZBA with these plans? It used to always be the other way around. You'd do ZBA and see if you'd get the approval before, you know, continue on with the designs. But I know some of these smaller, smaller lots.
It's sort of your choice to do whatever order you'd like, but we did have some situations where we granted special permits, and then what we approved wasn't approved by Conservation.
So if we get Board of Health and Conservation approval here, then chances are we'll get approval here at the zoning board.
Well, it's...
Not necessarily. So the problem that we've, like Dan just explained, is we don't have any control over Conservation.
Right.
So if the Conservation says you have to be 79 feet from wherever it is, and we say you can be 76 feet, now your zoning application is junk. Because that Conservation won't let you build where we said you could.
Well, I know, yeah. So it's kind of, I know the Conservation Commission likes to be the last permitting authority in the chain of permits, but...
In this town?
In all towns, they want to be the last, so. Because I know this got brought up, I won't talk about the other job yet, but it got brought up on another one. So I guess, so back to a situation like this, so to address the storm water, come up with storm water controls, that's going to, I gotta satisfy the Conservation Commission. And if I satisfy the Conservation Commission, then the ZBA should be satisfied.
Well, we want to know that the Highway Superintendent satisfied...
Yeah, the storm water.
That's right, yeah.
Because he sent us a letter, and if we don't address it, that's, we're not doing our job.
No, no, that's all part of the process, address all those things. But I guess the next step for this one on North Street is go before the Conservation Commission with storm water controls, to get their approval. And then if I do that, then I come back, I'll just keep this hearing open until I have their sign off.
Okay.
But just, you know, speaking for the clients, it's quite a bit of an expense for all these pre-existing non-conforming lots, you know, to do the Board of Health, do Conservation, you know, and then, then go to the zoning board, and then if you get denied, then it was all for...
That's the gamble, though.
Yeah. I mean, you're welcome to do it in whatever order you'd like.
We used to do it that, we used to do it at the zoning board, but I guess...
But then, we granted a couple of cases, we granted what the applicant was requesting, and then when they went to Conservation, Conservation said, no, that doesn't work for us, move it closer to the lot line than what we had approved. So then you had to do this twice, so it's kind of...
Well, so kind of what we're here, yeah.
That's past years, so.
Yep.
And lately, I mean, if that's the way to go, that's probably the way to go. But there's no guarantee that we're going to prove it in the end, that's what we're seeing.
Right, but I think, well, I'd like to think if we, you know, satisfy all the different boards, and then we come back here at the end with, this is the final plan, this is the storm water, I talked to the Highway Super, he's good, and addressed everything, then...
Well, you'll be in a better position because you've eliminated all the questions that we're gonna have, so now we can look at what you're actually working with.
All right, because I have a couple other ones that are going to be coming up, so it's going to be the same thing then.
Yeah, you just don't want to mislead people by saying, well, yeah, you get those on, and you come back here, you're all set.
No, no.
No, but...
You know, I tell people that nothing's a guarantee and you get through all the boards.
Right.
But there is just quite a bit of expense to get through ConCom and get through the Board of Health, and then, you know? So I guess, so I have another one, a couple more, just for some reason this year, I'm running into a lot of these pre-existing non-conforming, that Board of Health approval, Conservation approval, and then the ZBA at the end of the train.
That's what we've been asking for as we've been going along, because it's hard for us to make a decision not knowing what Conservation's gonna say.
Sure, sure. All right.
And we do that in the benefit of the applicant, actually, because if we turn around and say, yeah, go ahead, put it there, and then it's a repetitive petition if you come back to us, right? So now you get away two years, so, yeah.
Okay, so then, so then this one here, we're just gonna continue until I get through the Conservation Commission. So I don't know, is that something I have to do monthly, or...
No, I think we, if you...
No, as far as the extension.
Do you want to, you think it's something you can do in two months, 60 days?
Let's try, let's try 60 days, okay? Because it's going to take me a while to get the ConCom...
Even if you need a more time, you just stop in and see Jen, and you can accept it.
Just ask for another extension, but let's shoot for 60 days.
All right. If you, that's what, want to fill that out, Margaret?
That's what we were talking about, because back in, back in the day, years ago, we'd make the decision on the house, and Conservation would change it, and whether it be two feet or 20 feet, made a big difference for them going back to Conservation.
Okay.
But that's changed.
Do you know what the meeting date is in December?
What?
No, no, that's next year. What is our meeting date in December?
Fourth.
Fourth?
Yeah.
So you get a continuance until December 4th?
December 4th, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, so the applicant for case number 2023-14 is requesting a continuance for two months to our December meeting. I think we need to take a vote on it.
Accept that.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bombara. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great.
Okay, thank you.
See you in December.
Okay.
Now we gotta hold you out for three minutes.
I'm gonna wait three minutes?
It was posted, it's advertised for 7:15.
Yeah. You know what, we can take care of some of this business. And here are the decisions from last month's meeting. So, and there's also a invoice that needs to be signed.
Can you look under your map this morning?
Yeah.
Got my eyes on my brother. Lisa puts it, it's on the backside, that's why I keep looking. They do consistently do it.
Just trying to keep you guessing.
Yeah, well, they're doing it.
Need to get a stamp.
Would come in handy, much as it does for you.
I was on the planning board years ago, that's what we all had.
Oh, stamps?
Yep, I still got it. When I was a little longer on there, I said, because I kept them here. I said, I just feel better having my signature at home rather than...
Well, you signed it.
Yeah, really.
I don't remember that one.
Right, exactly.
Tahiti construction.
John, you want to do this?
Oh, yes, thank you, I was just gonna ask you for that. Thank you.
If you want, we can do this hearing, we'll do it in between the next ones if you want.
Okay.
So we can start this one.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, the next agenda item is a public hearing for Norma Aldridge, case number 2023-15, 58 Cottage Colony. The date of the application is September 12th. The following was posted in the Town Hall and also published in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and reads as follows, "The Town of Douglas Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:15 on Wednesday, October 4th, 2023, in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. to hear the following application: Norma Aldridge is requesting a special permit in an RA Zone District pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 9, and the Douglas Zoning Bylaws, Section 9.3 and Section 3.4.5, non-conforming structures, to reconstruct a single-family home on a pre-existing non-conforming lot on property located at 58 Cottage Colony, Assessors Map Number 159, Parcel Number 34. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass." The applicant or the representative here?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening again, Margaret Bacon, Civil Site Engineering, and I'm here representing Norma Aldridge for 58 Cottage Colony, who's with us, with her daughter. So it's just another one of those pre-existing non-conforming lots with an existing house on it, existing two-bedroom cottage. What she wants to do, she wants to turn this into a year-round residence for herself.
Okay.
Okay, so some work had to be done. The existing house has a well in the basement that had to be moved, so she just put a new well out in, out on the lakeside. There's a kind of an old cesspool, whatever you want to call it, on the side of the house here. So what we've already been through the Board of Health with a tight tank. Okay, that's the only thing that'll fit on this lot. Okay, 2,000 gallon tight tank right here. So that's been approved by the Board of Health. We went to the Conservation Commission, and we've been approved there. So basically, here's the existing building, she'd like to add a foundation, almost 10 feet by...
19.
19, is it?
Yep.
Yeah, and then with a deck on the lakeside.
What is that foundation gonna be?
What's that?
What's the foundation for? What's it gonna be?
To extend the house.
No, I get that, I get that part, but what kind of room is it?
What kind of a room?
Is it just a room, or is it...
Living room, kitchen...
Well, it's a, it's a, it's part of the basement. There's a, this is a walk-in to a stone...
So you're just gonna put in a foundation and nothing on it?
Yeah, oh yeah, then up on the second story...
An addition to the...
Yeah, to the, yeah, so the new addition, what's gonna be in that part of the house?
Well, part of the kitchen and living room. It'll be more or less all one room.
One big room, okay. Did you, Margaret, did you happen to have any plans for that? Typically, we have something that we reference as we go through this.
Okay.
Because it could turn into anything, right? So...
Yeah, it could turn into a couple new bedrooms.
Right.
Based on what we know now.
Have to get the plan...
Is there a house plan?
Is there a house plan already?
We, oh, they have, they're done. We have house plans, I don't know if I have any house plans with me. Two bedrooms upstairs. And because it's a tight tank, that's all they're limited to.
It's too sorry? Well, that's why I wanted to have a plan, so you understand.
Yeah, here's some plans, I'm sorry, I should have included those in the application.
Just after the meetings, then, there's always conversation back and forth with the Building Commissioner as to what, what did you approve, so...
It's still a two-story, yeah, yeah.
So it's just gonna be basement on the lower level, and a...
Yeah. Living room, dining room, kitchen, and the first floor. You're keeping the, the old cestes, what, you're keeping that part of the building on the very corner right there, yeah?
Correct, actually, it's just getting expanded a little.
That's what I thought. Okay, so you're gonna use it against it's on the plans here, I'm sorry. Then two bedrooms up, okay. Yeah, it's important for us to see what's on the plans to make sure there's no changes after, you know?
Sure.
You know, so during the process.
Looks familiar.
Not with a nosy what you're doing, but see how many rooms there are.
Looks like there's also a bump out on the, on the house as well, on the side, or is that existing?
Well, there is a small bump out right here on the side.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, this is what cesspool is. They're gonna change that, the bathroom's gonna be here.
Okay.
So the toilet and sink here, it's on the inside, so...
So is that a new foundation as well?
No, that's the old one.
No.
The new one.
As existing now.
Yeah, looks on this plan like a new foundation.
Plan chose a new foundation.
For that, oh, they have, well, the way I understood with our grid roof, you know, the old cesspool was inside that.
Yeah, see, on this, even on this plan, the addition towards the water is shown as proposed based on looking at the foundation.
Yeah, you can see the foundation here, but there's a cesspool in the middle of the water, so they're gonna dig that out.
Did you have these with your submission?
Yeah, that's, so the house is this far from the lot line now, and it's gonna be that much closer.
Well, we didn't get any submission, that's why I asked.
There is a bump out there now?
Yep. Under the top of ground there.
Is that correct? Is there a...
There is, because they have, that's their bathroom right there, that just drops right down into a cesspool.
Yep.
It's right in there.
So...
There's a dotted one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I think the question being asked, we have an existing foundation that's shown in hash marks for the existing, then you have where the septic, or the pit was, that appears to be a new foundation going in on that area there for the bathroom to be bumped into, along with your new addition on the front and your new deck on front of that. Is that correct?
I guess I'd have to look at those plans, if that's what it is, or the...
That's correct, because that's what I see too.
Whatever's there was there, but they're showing a new foundation.
New foundation.
Bumped on the side.
Right.
The new front addition, and the new front deck with the porch assembly off to the right-hand side.
So the foundation is out of the ground, it's made of stone. You're gonna add and brand new foundation on the new addition. So what they probably did have to do is clean up in that, because it goes all the way down to the ground, that part of the building right there, and that's what cesspool was. It was more or less a, back then it was 55 gallons of rum.
Looking from the road on the right-hand side.
From the chimney, yeah.
Yes, yeah, so. But it looks like a new foundation, so.
Yeah, going in there, they would have to, because, you know...
So for a little clarity on that, there's an existing, in that new proposed foundation, on the front half of it, there's a existing toilet and a sink, behind it is a chimney. So they're just gonna square that all off, that's what it shows here on the plan.
Correct, so this little bump out here is a little bigger than what's out there right now.
Right, it doesn't extend any further to the sideline, it doesn't extend any closer to the lake, but what it's gonna do is square it off to the front of the house.
Correct.
I went out to take a look at it, but there was a new well being drilled, and there was some associated vehicles there, and it was hard to...
You can see why she needed a new well.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, in the middle of the house.
Right, look how close the two are.
Yeah.
Yep.
She didn't drink the water.
Well, that, your well's not supposed to be any closer than 25 feet deep, foundation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any members have any questions for the applicant?
Mike, is there a stamp on that from an engineer?
No, Cuddy signed this.
Oh, okay.
Cuddy designed.
All right.
There's a drawing number, and...
Any questions from anybody? Is there anybody in the room that has any questions on this application? All right, hearing none, and entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Forget, to close the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. Okay, public hearing is now closed, but the board like to make a decision on this case tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit. And the drawings we have today, is it, you said there was a number on there, Mike?
There's a number on the bottom of the drawing, Ronnie has it, you'll see it there.
You want the number?
Yeah.
I had to read.
Flip a page or two, you'll get it clearer.
Yeah.
A few of it maybe.
Drawing, okay. Reference to the drawings of 623-24-10, looks like B on eight, number two. That's it, huh? And the number is a... On the map size, it's 288, and the process size is 23, looking for the number of the...
2023-15.
2023-15, thank you.
Yep, do you want to reference that plan as well, John?
Yes, this one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, and the plans that I have from an engineer, civil engineering, and that's, the project number is S23103-DGN.
Is there a date on that plan?
Yeah, the date is May 1st, 23.
Okay.
Actually, there's a revised date up there, 8/4/2023, right up there, the revision, and that was through the...
In the revision block.
Oh, okay, all right.
Through the Conservation Commission.
This one right here, 8/4/23, okay, that was through Conservation, okay, thank you.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara to approve this application referencing both the house plan and the engineer's plan.
One second.
Okay, motion's...
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, your special permit is approved, we'll get it drafted as quickly as we can, and good luck with your project.
Is there a waiting period?
We have to submit it to the Town Clerk.
After it's stamped in, it's got 20 days of appeal period.
Right.
So can the applicant, at their own risk, go ahead, or?
No, we don't suggest that at all.
Oh, okay. All right, so there's a 20-day appeal period, once the, the special permit gets stamped in.
Correct.
Okay.
Typically, it's, that's been up to three to four weeks.
Depends how busy, yeah.
Before it gets to the Town Clerk.
Town Council draws up the decision that sends it to us.
Okay, all right, okay, so we're talking...
Three or four weeks. Three or four weeks.
Talking probably 50 days.
We just signed a decision from our last meeting, if that's any indication.
Sure, sure, okay, got it, so it's gonna be...
Jen lets us know as soon as they're ready, and then we come in and sign them if we don't get them until, we just got this one, so we signed it tonight.
Okay, so...
It's a lawyer.
Right, right, so we're talking a month and a half.
Probably.
Okay.
It's realistic.
And we're in for Christmas, right?
Depends how fast you can move.
Depends on the builder, it's actually, no, depends on the builder.
Thank you very much.
All right, what's your Christmas was?
Which year?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Better next one, 7:30.
Let me get all this together. This goes over... Yep. Okay, the next agenda item is a public hearing for Glenn Campbell, case number 2023-16-291-7-South Street. The date of the application is September 12th. The following was posted in the town hall and in the Worcester Telegram and Gazette, and it read as follows. The Town of Douglas zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing beginning at 7:30 on Wednesday, October 4th, in the Douglas Municipal Center, Resource Room 29, Depot Street, Douglas, Mass., to hear the following application. Glenn Campbell is requesting a special permit in an IRA zone district pursuant to MGL Chapter 40A, Section 10, and the Douglas zoning bylaws, Section 3.4.3, non-conforming structures, and a variance pursuant to subsection 4, excuse me, 3.4.4, to construct an addition to the front and sides of a mobile home structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot on property located at 291-7-South Street, Assessors Map 288, Parcel 23. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Is the applicant here? Okay.
I'm here, Representative Glenn. He's actually in the hospital right now.
Oh, okay.
My knee's strained.
Okay. Okay. Okay, do you want to explain what you're looking for?
So, we're looking for the special permit to build on a three-season porch against the front and side of our house. It's, there's no electrical, no plumbing, no heating going through there, just, we're looking for the room. We'll have a roof on it. We put in a, or the foundation will be set for it, its own existing foundation that will be put in. We're just looking forward to be approved.
We have to mention something. Like, it's an eight-by-20 room, and it's got the, he put triple, triple header on the front of the building and on the front of the structure, so it's already all up there. There's 18 concrete pillars that are holding up the whole floor and everything.
And they're four feet down.
Yeah, they're four feet deep.
So was this already started?
Yes.
Yeah, it's almost done, right, yeah. I drove down there the other day. I gotta ask why you didn't, you didn't apply for a permit. I just gotta ask that question.
Nope, so from what I understand, is what he told me, is he had an old permit, and he thought it was still valid, so he went with it. And then that's when we found out that it was not valid, and he had to start over.
I've been here for a few years, in court a few years, and I've never seen him come before us for another reason.
That's what he told me.
And it was never approved here, because it was, he backed out of it the last time he was here. So, I have a problem with that, but I also have a problem with the size of the lot and where the addition is compared to the center of the road. Where's the septic system in this? Is it a shared with all the rest of the trailers?
No, we have our own.
All right, how about the well?
That's shared, durable.
I'm sorry, but I, Mr. Chairman, I have a problem with this one, I really do. It's so dang close to everything down here. The fact that you built the two is...
I mean, all of those, you know, it's very close together.
Very much. I think there's eight in there, right? Four on each side? Eight trailers?
Yeah, ten. Ten on our side. Yeah, the other side has five or six.
Ten total on both of them, then, you're saying?
There was four on, there's one edge that has four, one trailer's abandoned in the front, and there's another four trailers. And then on the other side, there's another four.
Okay.
I was thinking lots, there's ten lots there.
Yeah.
One, two, one of them's collapsing, and the other two are vacant.
We actually, Glenn owns two lots. He owns seven and nine.
Yeah, he owns the last two lots.
And nine is not on those plans. Because the structure's being built on, what, seven? Not nine, that's why we put it on there.
So what just, what I understand is the lot that's right next to it over here, because this is the road. He owns that one also?
Yes, and that's the, that's the end of the lot.
And there's no trailer there?
Yeah.
And there's no trailer.
It's just land. There was a trailer there, but it's not there anymore.
At any time, did he consider joining the two lots together, you know?
Um, no, we never visited that aspect of it back then.
Because that would have made it a lot easier, and you could have put it on the other side.
Yeah, because it would have pulled out the land there.
You're so close, I mean, you're on a road, literally. Anybody else?
No, I didn't have a chance to go out there, and I hoped to, but I didn't.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I can give a little clarity to this.
Sure.
I believe there's a total of 16 lots in that trailer park that were pre-divided years ago.
Okay.
These folks are down near the end lot. They do own another lot. I believe he's trying to get the last one down on the right-hand side. That might be coming up, and he was talking about it. Anyway, he's down near the end of the lot. All of these lots are smaller, 50 by 100 or less than that. All these trailers are close together.
Mm-hmm.
We did originally get a complaint about a septic smell down in that area. That's what provoked me to go down there to look, along with the board, how the structure was already being built at that time. The concern was, is it on the septic system? Where is the septic system? Where is the water line coming in? They're on common water line, well for the park, but they each have their own septic system. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe your septic system, if you're looking at the trailer from the road, is on the right-hand side of the lot.
I'm not confident.
They already said they didn't know where it was.
So if you're...
I believe it's on the right side.
Yeah, if you're standing on the left, you're standing in the driveway, it's on the left side. But it would be right side of addition, the addition, yes.
There was no permits issued for this prior to this.
Mm-hmm.
There was a permit issued sometime back, went to research for an addition that's on the backside of that.
Yes.
But I know this had come before the board was before, and there was no permits issued for that.
Right, 2013 or 14, it came before the board and the applicant withdrew.
I found that after you guys came.
Yep.
Unfortunately, it looks like you just finally got caught with your additions and sheds, because there's nothing here that's conforming. You got a shed to the right that's just about touching the line, the one on the left side, and the addition on the left side is eight tenths of a foot from the property line. Two sheds in the back are over the property line. And that's a pretty busy, busy area down there.
Yep.
This actually, the entrance to this is actually on South Street.
Yes.
The roadway's on South Street, there at the end of the roadway.
Okay.
Right inside.
Because just looking at this, it's at a South Street on the end, on this plan.
Well, I don't know. Personally, I think people buy lots that's small, they have to understand that there's limitations. And I think this is really trying to do too much on such a small lot, but... Just my opinion. Any other board members have any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, is anybody who'd like to speak on this?
I would, sir.
Okay, you know, we just need you to state your name and address for the minute taker, that's all.
I'm Steve Hutnak. I live on Hemlock Street.
Okay.
And my property in the back of Butts, this trailer park.
Okay.
My cousin originally owned that land. He sold it to a developer, put in three roads. There were five trailers on each side of the road. Five of the trailers never got built. There was gonna be 20 in it. One well served all of them, and the way I had understood when it was built, there were two trailers per septic system. Some years back, there was overflow from one of the systems, and supposedly, the field between my back line and those trailers, they stripped there and put in a septic system out there. I don't know if it's connected to one trailer, two trailers, or 10 trailers. I never went to any board of health meetings or whatnot. My concern is that if they're increasing this facility, is it to bring in more people, to add more water to an already septic system? Because I've already had trouble with one neighbor on the other side of me with overflow coming onto my property, that the Town of Douglas did nothing for me. It cost me mega dollars to solve the problem. If they're doing something on this side of the property, and my property is below that, the elevation dips down, my concern is if they dig in and damage a septic system, that I get polluted on the backside of my property. That's my concern.
All right.
And I would like to know more about the septic system and the building, where it is on the lot. I'd like to see diagrams. Those are my concerns.
They do, they did submit a plan showing the existing building and then the addition that's under construction. Certainly welcome to look at this if you'd like.
I would love to.
Can I step around, John?
Yeah. May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Mr. Hutnak, so when you said they stripped the land and put in a septic system, do you remember the year or around? Because that should be on file.
I built my house in 1972 and moved in in 73. Those trailers were already on the lot at that time. So I would say it was the later part of the 60s, early 70s. When those were done.
But what you said, you said they stripped the land and put in a septic system, and that's...
In the field, because my great aunt owned all of that property. And she owned that field, gave two pieces of property to her sons.
Yeah.
They divided that property in half. The one brother sold his property to this developer, put this trailer park in. She kept the field. Later on, they, another family bought that house with all of that land, and I don't remember the date, but they came in with a dozer, and they stripped the loom off that field. It's all piled up right in the backside of my property, right there up against the back corner of it. And they supposedly put in a septic system for those trailers, because they were overflowing all of those individual leach fields.
You didn't remember the year that was, did you?
I don't remember the year, but I know it's been a good 20 years.
Okay.
Because I've been retired for 10, 12, and it was another 10 before that. I'm gonna say it's close to 20, 30 years.
Okay.
Once that was done.
I'm just curious, because if it's still there...
Right.
So.
Right.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman, you...
Anybody else want to speak on this? Application? Okay. All right, not hearing any. Does the board like to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombara to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearing's now closed. The board like to move and make a decision on this case tonight?
All right, the only thing I don't have is the number.
Here it is, John, here.
Probably 62. I'll make a, make a motion to approve the non-conforming structure, I'm sorry, Glenn Campbell, a special permit on Map 288, Parcel Number 23, non-conforming structures. And the number, 223, not a special permit, since here, what is it?
Says special permit.
Oh, I gave him my copy. Can I take a look at that again?
Sure.
Excuse us, please, Mr. Hutnak.
There's a special permit, yeah.
That's what I have.
What is it?
I don't know.
I don't agree with this getting both. I got two applications.
Yeah, we have two applications, one for a special permit and one for a variance.
And our agenda says variance.
And it was advertised, and it says variant, says special permit.
That's...
Oh, I'm sorry, it says special permit.
Special permit.
And a variance.
Yeah.
Let's see what they wrote here.
When we got the application, I did have, we filled out two, we filled out two different ones, and they had us pay for two different ones. The special permit and the variance was a separate, they're separate charges.
I don't see the denial letter from you, Ken.
It's on the backside of the, you gotta go in to the back of your page.
All right, saving paper these days.
Yeah, I just happened to stumble across it earlier.
Thank you, yeah.
Now, in his denial, it says a special permit.
Yeah. It says a special permit and a variance for the Douglas.
Yeah, it copied the two sections.
Yeah. We should be okay.
All right, so the special permit is to extend a non-conforming structure?
It was a spec, it was a special permit to reconstruct, extend, alter, change, or modify.
Okay, all right. And then the variance was because there was not enough area, not enough drainage, not enough...
No, variance says... They have both the same things, sir.
Oh, yeah, it says the same thing in both.
So they follow the instructions, because in, in his letter, it tells them they have to...
Both.
Yeah, both. Yeah, both.
Going back through my records, I don't want to have to look back.
Okay.
I mean, I think it might have been due to the fact that the trailer was a pre, a non-performing use.
Mm-hmm.
That might have triggered one of them. We'll get the special permit, variance, with the back requirements.
Okay.
So you have to have two different motions, two different things. So are we hearing, did we hear both of them, or did we hear one?
Good question.
What was the advertisement that you read?
Yeah, the advertisement states they're requesting a special permit in our zone district, and it says that a variant, they're requesting a variance pursuant to subsection four, 3.4.4, to construct an addition to the front and sides of a mobile home structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
So, so you said both of them, so we got both at the same time?
Yeah, when I read it, yeah, it was both.
So your motion, John, needs to be for both, or, or you could, or you could do one at a time, whatever you want to do.
I'll do both. I'll do the both, the special permit and the variance. And the DVA number is a 2023-16.
You want, you want this, or?
No, I got it already.
Okay, all right.
I made my motion.
Just so I understand, so your motion is to approve the special permit request and the variance request?
That is correct.
As submitted?
As submitted.
Okay.
And again, the number is 2023-16-16.
Okay. We have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Palmer. Any further discussion? If not...
So the variance and, and just, I'm sorry, Dan.
Go ahead.
The variance and the special permit have the same number?
Yeah, it's on, that's what I have on this one, because it's, it says both on the front page.
Yeah, actually...
Well, the two applications just...
Yep, there's a special permit, same number.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Palmer. All in favor? Opposed? Aye?
Aye.
All right, special permit and the variance request is denied, and it's all right.
Okay.
You're going to have to contact the building commissioner tomorrow to find out what your next steps are on this structure that you have there. That's already started.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we also have...
Okay, two minutes.
Yeah.
Too much water.
Yep, no problem.
No, you just, I won't say.
Right. Was that a motion, John?
Yes, it is.
Quick motion.
Yeah. All right, we do have a schedule of our meetings for 2024. I don't know if anybody had a chance to look it over, but I just had a question about a meeting scheduled for July 3rd. So at this point, it'd be no big deal if we moved it ahead a week.
Yeah.
Probably be good for the members and probably for most applicants.
Gone away a week.
Yeah, yeah, so, so we could move our July meeting till the 10th. And...
Would that change your submittal time also?
Yes, it would, yep. It would move our submittal date ahead by seven days as well, to the 18th.
Good catch, David.
Where are you now?
On top of the...
On the, the July...
Jen, where to straighten this all up?
Change it to July 10th instead of the 3rd.
July, I got the...
So right now, July 3rd is going to move to the 10th, which moves the submittal date from June 11th to June 18th.
So we could say that everything, all the dates pursuant to our July 3rd meeting will be moved one week ahead.
Sorry about that.
That'd be all right.
Until sunshine, please, back.
John, we're talking about the meeting dates for 2024?
Yes, yes.
And one has a meeting date on July 3rd, which probably isn't good for most members and probably not good for the applicants.
Probably not.
So we were just suggesting that all those dates for the, related to the July 3rd meeting, they moved ahead one week.
Oh, okay.
The submittal date...
It would be...
It would be July 10th. Their submittal date would be June 18th rather than the 11th, and so on and so forth. So everything would move ahead seven days.
So the 10th, okay, sounds good to me.
Okay, we have a motion to approve these meeting dates for 2024?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bombara, seconded by Mr. Fitzpatrick to approve the 2024 meeting schedule with the change of, the July meeting will be moved to the 10th, and all the related deadlines will be moved seven days ahead as well.
Right.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's why you put little stars around it.
And then we have a construction report from, for North Village. Is there something you'd like to...
Okay, so like, what I did is I spoke with Neil Reivicky, we can have two weeks ago, and asked him to visit the report that we get from Lennard, their, their monthly report, and give me an update on what's been, we've completed on this list to date. So the list that you're seeing, that's a response, North Village Tracking List 9723, was an updated list of what he says has been completed. He's also contacted Lennard. Lennard's going to look at those on his next site visit.
Yep.
I did do a drive-through in the site. He has, when you go compass, compass way and you pass Nautical, there's about five of the rain gardens in total, four on the right, one on the left, that hadn't percolated down through. I mentioned that to him. That also has a sediment problem because Nautical drains into those and then drains across into the catchment in back of compass. So when they get full vegetation in there and they're not getting siltation, they're going to redo the bottoms and those things again.
Okay, they had problems with other, other bottoms in the past, I think.
Yeah, it's a kind of a, every time they, they move earth and any sediment of any sort gets in there, the water stops working. For me, it's a concern what's going to happen later on, because, you know, it doesn't really take much to get them to stop working. They're moving forward on the left side of Nautical. I just gave permits for foundations for 2224. I believe they have one, maybe two more foundations on that left side of Nautical. That left side would be complete, which would be a good thing for us, because then I'll be after them to make sure they get the vegetation on that side, which is going to help all the stormwater management going down.
Okay.
Then they're going to complete the right-hand side. They kind of bounce it back and forth, but most of the permitting's been on the left side.
Okay, and that's the side there's other units that are occupied behind those?
Correct.
Okay.
The right side would be where Phase 3 would be going in on, in back of the right-hand side.
Okay, yep, I just wanted to show which way we're coming, up or down the street.
Right, if you're coming in compass...
Okay.
Take a left...
Yep.
Take a right onto Nautical, the left-hand side, which is the backside of the rest of compass, that side is where they're really concentrating, which is good for us.
Yeah.
They were also in, moving a lot of the materials, they've been taking a lot of materials out of there on the right-hand side, pushing it back and repiling and all that. So I'm going to make the assumption, I haven't talked to him, that they're getting ready to start doing the foundations.
How many more foundations would there be on that?
I don't know the exact number. I'm going to say there's about 10 more foundations.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
I did question, you know, where we're looking for the term of this project, the completion dates and all that. They did say again that they were hoping to start doing excavation for Phase 3 spring of '24.
Phase 4.
Uh, Phase 4.
Yep.
Spring of '24. They're really hoping to be 100% complete within the two-year period of time from today.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there's three notes on here. Under number three, under the construction report, the last sentence, "The contractor should consider removing the sediment within the sump at more frequent intervals to allow more storage until the final modifications to this area have been made." That must be in the SC 59.
Yeah, that's the Storm Catchment 59.
Yeah.
Which has been holding water a lot more than anybody in that area should have to deal with.
Yep, so the next, number four, "The breath and swell leading to SC 59 to SC 51 has not been fully stabilized, causing the sediment accumulation to enter the stone inlet in SC 41. The swell should be fully stabilized as soon as possible when sediment removed."
Right.
So, did you talk to them about that?
Yeah, they've put in some new matted seed in there, and it's starting to take again, so it's starting to get some work in there.
So they addressed this concern. And the final one was, number eight, "Sediment was observed in roadway in multiple site locations. Sediment should be removed from the roadway at frequent intervals." You addressed that with them as well?
Yeah, it's not being done as frequently as it should, you know, when you get the sediments, whether it's, you know, people running over the side of the grass coming in on the main, being thoroughfare, or if it's from their construction, I said, you know, you've got to get this up. They do have a room attachment up there for their skid steer, and I said, you know, I want to get this cleaned up more often. Maybe it shouldn't have to be dust and dirt and everything else.
Last time I was in there, uh, the last meeting, I questioned the width of that sidewalk. Do you have a chance to go see what the width of that was?
No, I didn't.
Could you do that?
Yeah, the one on the way out on the right. Yeah. Doesn't look that big.
Maybe they could say...
I don't want to guess, I'm going to leave it to the professionals to go in there with a little tape measure and check it out.
At a minimum, it's got to be ADA compliant, ADA.
I think there's a rumor around the building that there's an ADA compliance officer that resides here, so if you happen to speak to Mr. Frazier, could you ask him to check that? Thanks.
We'll be checking.
Looking in the mirror.
Okay. All right, and then I guess last but not least, we have the minutes for our August meeting.
Yes, have I read them?
I have two.
I have as well. Have you read the minutes?
Mm-hmm.
I make a motion to approve, unless you want to read them.
No.
Make a motion to approve the August 2nd, 2023 minutes as written.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Palmer to approve the minutes of our August 2nd meeting as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes were approved as written. Okay, and we don't have any other further agenda items?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Bombara to adjourn. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned at 8:08 PM.